Good evening and welcome to the Hampstead Candidates Forum. I'm Chris Nevin, the Mayor of Hampstead. Tonight's forum is being held in person at Hampstead Town Hall. The Community Media Center is streaming the forum live on cable channel HD 1086 and Channel 19. It is also being streamed live on Facebook, YouTube, and on the Carroll Media Center's website at carrollmediacenter.org. The forum will be recorded and re-prodcast on cable channel HD 1086, Channel 19, and posted online for on-demand viewing as well. Our moderator this evening is Seth Shipley. We've known Seth for a long time with Shipley's Fine Jewelry. He's been a successful and longtime business owner on Main Street, and this year he's celebrating 30 years in Hampstead. However, his roots date back to childhood growing up in Arcadia and then Eldersburg. In 1983 through the mid-'80s, he served our nation in the first of the United States Air Force and then in the Air Guard. Seth started in the jewelry business in all places of Jackson, Mississippi, where he was employed in a small jewelry store. Before, in 1986, he moved over to Mobo, Alabama, bought his first jewelry store. He sold that in 1989 and moved back to home in Maryland. He started his business again out of his parents' basement. In 1990, he incorporated as a jeweler's bench and then found his way to our town. In 1999, the business moved to our current location, to its current location, when he bought the property at 1024 North Main Street. It's been there since. In addition to the jewelry business, and I've seen Seth do this, he's very accomplished as an auctioneer, having graduated from the Mendenhall School of Auctioneering in 2013 and a Certified Auctioneer's Institute at Indiana University in 2018. He's served on many boards of local community banks and organizations and is very involved in helping nonprofits raise money. Seth served on the Hampstead Town Council way back in 1996 until 1997, filling out a council member's term. And he currently serves on the Carroll County Republican Central Committee. He and his wife Carol live in the area where they've raised their two sons, Austin and Justin. So, and before I turn it over to Seth, we'll introduce our candidates for tonight. We have Diane Barrett, Wayne Thomas, Zach Tomlin, and Ben Zolman. So, without further ado, Seth, it's you.
Thank you, Mayor Nevin. Because the forum is being recorded, we ask that everyone turn off their cell phones. Attendees refrain from applause, from making any noise during the forum or doing anything visible or audible to express support or opposition to any candidate during the event. We will begin by introducing you to the candidates following their introduction. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. I will then ask the candidates a series of questions, which will be a mix of two-minute questions, one-minute questions, and a 15-second speed round. At the conclusion of the questions and answer period, each candidate will have one minute for a summary statement. We will be timing the responses and we'll signal when your time has run out. This lovely lady will be the signaller of the time. So with that, Diane, we'll start with you.
Good evening. I'm Diane Barrett, and I've been a Hampstead resident since 1992. I've been employed as an accountant for 30 years, nearly half of which has been in the property management industry. Serving the town of Hampstead became a calling for me in 2015, when the school system announced that they would be closing North Carroll High School, a cornerstone of our community. I joined a group of like-minded parents and community members to oppose this decision, and our call to action became known as a grassroots movement. Although we were unable to prevail in our appeal efforts, I was so proud to be part of a town that demonstrated so much resilience and unity during this challenging time. Following my advocacy for North Carroll, in 2018, I was honored to be invited to join Hampstead's Board of Zoning Appeals. Subsequently, in 2020, I was appointed to fill a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. In all of these roles, I've had the pleasure of getting to know many residents and members of our business community and talking with them about their concerns and visions for the future of Hampstead. As a town council member, I will make physically responsible decisions for the betterment of the town. I will strive to attract new businesses to our new and improved Main Street and support our current businesses as they continue to emerge from the challenges of the past year. I also fully support our police officers who are dedicated to keeping Hampstead safe. It would be an even greater honor to be selected by you, the citizens of Hampstead, to represent you on the town council, and so tonight I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Wayne?
First, I'd like to thank the town of Hampstead for having this forum, especially Acia Mora, for Seth Shipley volunteering to be the moderator, and for the Carroll Media Center for broadcasting and recording this event. I hope that everyone, I hope everyone is safe and well this evening. My name is Wayne H. Thomas. My wife Nora and I live at 1100 South Main Street. I'm employed by Exelon as an IT system engineer. I adopted Hampstead as my hometown over 30 years ago. I was first elected to the town council 28 years ago as a part of a group of citizens who wanted to control the growth in Hampstead by ensuring we had water, roads, and schools to support the residential expansion. Since getting on the council, we have controlled growth. We have lobbied and got funding for the Hampstead bypass to take the pressure off our Main Street. We have lobbied the state and got funding for the Hampstead renovation project, which is just now winding up. And we've expanded our recreational facilities, greatly improved our water system, became a sustainable community, and created a award-winning police department and public works department. As Chair of the Tree Commission, we have planted 250 trees in Hampstead and continued the tradition of being a true city. With a group of dedicated volunteers, we were able to renovate the Hampstead train station and open it as a museum and a visitor's center. The Hampstead Train Station Committee hosts the Music in a Park series to promote our downtown. I have worked extremely hard for Hampstead over the past 28 years. Please give me an opportunity for another four. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Zach?
My name is Zach Tomlin. I don't have anything prepared or written. I just thought I'd leave it. But basically, I'm the president of Tomlin Technology, which is a business in Westminster. I founded that 11 years ago when I was 26-years-old. I'm the Vice Chair of the Mid-Maryland Workforce Development Commission. It's a political appointment by the county. I sit on the Board of Directors for Together We Own It, which is a local nonprofit. I've been on the Board of Magic, which is also a nonprofit in the area. I'm fourth-generation Carroll County. My kids are fifth-generation Carroll County. I have a blended family. There's five of, or seven of us altogether, which is quite a workload, especially when you've got a school and everything like that going on. But basically, I love social service. I love giving back, and I just want to use my skills as a cybersecurity consultant, engineer, system solutions architect, to basically help make the town more efficient, to protect our municipality from cyber threats, which are increasing. It's the wild, wild west out here. We need to make sure that we're locked down. And so, yeah, I don't even think I'm gonna have to need the whole two minutes. So, I'll just end it right there.
Thank you, Zach. Ben?
Yes, I'm Ben Zolman. I wanted to thank everyone for coming and thank everyone for putting on this forum for us. To start, I feel like when I would watch political candidates or town councils or anybody running for office, I felt like I put them on a pedestal, that they, you couldn't, they almost as if you couldn't relate to them. So I was just gonna give a little bit of background of myself. I grew up in a small town in Nebraska. It was 2,600 people, and I come from a family of eight children. I'm the third of the eight. So it was a fun time growing up. In a small town, though, I mean, it's a third of the size of Hampstead, we didn't have a lot of things to do. We would go to the lake quite a bit and go swimming at the public swimming pool that we had. And eventually, similar to here, a bypass was put through our Main Street, where we had one stoplight. It was the whole, it's all we had in our town was one stoplight. And that Main Street, I have to credit the town council and the town here for pushing Main Street revitalization and the streetscapes that have gone in, so that it's not forgotten the Main Street. I went back in 2014. I haven't lived in Nebraska since 2002, and it was very rundown, not very many shops open. And you, as a town, we have done great. I want to keep promoting that. I think when my wife and I were looking where to live, we looked at the small-town feel, so I could get what she, what I wanted and close to the city to get what she wanted. And I want to, I want to keep making this, this town a small-town feel for our, for families and have it, have it safe. I know there's some developments going on that will help promote, keep it safe. And I think, I think that's, that's me. That's in a nutshell.
Thanks, Ben. Now we'll start with the questions. Again, you have two minutes for your response. There is two questions within the question. If you need the second question repeated, I will repeat it for you. Diane, we're gonna start with you. This is right down your alley. "The Hampstead Planning and Zoning Commission is currently working on a 10-year update to comprehensive plan. What is your vision for Hampstead over the next 10 years plus, including its most significant challenges and ideas and how to address them?" That's the first part. "With Main Street now complete, is there a next big project you think that should be set as a priority within the limits of the budget?"
Now that the Main Street revitalization is nearly 100% complete, and as we continue to emerge from the economic impacts of the pandemic, we will be more readily able to solve one of Hampstead's biggest challenges, which has been to fill the vacant buildings on Main Street. One topic we have been discussing in our planning and zoning meetings is modifying our zoning to allow for more mixed-use properties. The vacant buildings would then be more marketable to prospective buyers, who would then, who would like to be able to supplement their commercial income on the ground floor with residential rental income upstairs, and their property values would increase. I envision Main Street and downtown Hampstead as becoming more of a destination for our residents and visitors. With the addition of a new social hall on the fire department property and the redevelopment of North Carroll High School as a sports complex, there will be many more opportunities for the community to gather. I think we're all looking forward to that. And I believe we've also been getting some funding for the upgrades to the Memorial Park, which will be an even greater place to, to have more, more social gatherings. And as communities, as, as members of the community congregate in Hampstead, they'll also be bringing more foot traffic to, to our businesses. The mutual support that our residents and businesses have for each other contribute to the small-town charm that makes Hampstead so special.
Thank you. Wayne, should I repeat the question?
No, sir. I'm good. My vision would be for a more viable, active downtown with a good mix of housing and business uses. Sound familiar?
Yes.
Challenges would include updating the code to allow for more adaptive use in the Main Street quarter, to provide housing options and business uses that would be compatible with our small-town atmosphere. We could address the challenges by continuing the revitalization work, leveraging the great results of the Main Street renovation project just completed, and bring in business owners and citizens to form a committee to help shape our vision. Councilmen Unglesby and myself were the ones that pushed for an update to the Memorial Park in the center of town, which is used for our Christmas decorations and also used for music in the park and Santa's house, and so that we can get that done. We're looking forward to that. For big projects for the town, we just got a, a grant from the COVID-19 funding of between $3 and $4 million. Some of it is, can be used to offset your COVID, money spent on your COVID-19 relief, and some of it can be used for big infrastructure projects. And so, the town's gonna be looking at how we can spend that on an infrastructure project that can benefit the whole town. Problem is, we can't use it on ones that we just bonded, so.
Thank you.
I agree with a lot of what Diane and Wayne said. Mixed-use property sounds like a genius idea to me. When we were looking, I was looking to bring my business to Main Street, to downtown. We were looking all over the place, and that's what we wanted. We wanted something where we could have the business on the bottom level and we could rent out the top, subsidize that income. So I think that's a brilliant idea. I'm all for that. As far as, you know, downtown viability, absolutely. We want to attract businesses to Hampstead. I would like to do that by going out and getting them. I, I'm a county boy. That's the beauty I bring to the Hampstead Town Council, is I'm a county boy. So I can go to Eldersburg and talk to people there, or Westminster, or Tonti Town, and really, you know, encourage people, my colleagues, to come and, and see Hampstead as a place where you can invest your money. We want to keep that small-town feel. We don't want to overdevelop. People love the small-town feel. I do. And I really don't want to see this become, you know, just too, too overpopulated. When I grew up, Carroll County was very rural, very rural. Eldersburg was just a little street, you know. 32, there wasn't a lot of traffic there. So, you know, as far as projects that we're looking for, infrastructures, again, I'm going to agree with you guys, infrastructure is critically important. Internet is my big thing. And as we have children working, you know, doing school from home, which, if you're a parent, oh my gosh, I feel for you all. It's increased bandwidth usage. My internet cuts out all the time. I'm an IT professional. This is what I do. So I have logs, firewall records and everything, and it's very, very, very hard to get work done when we're doing remote work. And then try to encourage businesses to come and use downtown. Internet is a big deal, and I'm running out of time, so.
Thank you. I know there's some open buildings on Main Street Hampstead, by the way, for businesses. Ben, should I repeat the question?
Yes, sir. That'd be great. I wrote it down, but I'll repeat.
"The Hampstead Planning and Zoning Commission is currently working on the 10-year update to the comprehensive plan. What is your vision for Hampstead over the next 10 years plus, including its most significant challenges and ideas of how to address them? Also, with Main Street now complete, which is wonderful, is there a next big project that you should, think should be a priority to set our sights on?"
Okay. So over the next 10 years, I know currently we have a development that'll bring a couple hundred homes into the, into the area. And then we're also trying to develop some of the light industrial land that is within our town limits, and the sports complex that will go into the old North Carroll County High School. And also, the Sheriff's Department will stay in the bottom of the sports complex. So with all the, all the sports that'll come and then the extra housing, I think in the next 10 years, we definitely will need to look at transportation, how to, how to manage the traffic. I haven't looked at the traffic plan. I need to do that, but I think within the next 10 years, maybe towards the latter end of the 10 years, we may even need to see how we can do an off-ramp onto Hawksville Road to try and drive some of that traffic to Main Street and help us, help us just better manage it, because it's going to get pretty busy. So that's my, my, and I think about that because I'm in commercial development. I've built over 1,100 units, most, the majority of them, 1,000 of them. Around 1,000 of them were low-income housing. So I think that would be another benefit to have here is update the low-income housing that's here and then also maybe provide some more. It is a great, a great benefit to the community. When we moved here, I liked the, the small-town charm of Hampstead. We got the letter saying that when the parades are, when town meetings are. I loved that. I think we should keep promoting that on social media to keep the businesses. We should partner with Chamber of Commerce and promote the businesses on Main Street. And as a family moving here, that's what we looked for, is what, what businesses were here, what the schools were like, what activities we will have as, for our children. So I think those are the important things that I would look at over the next 10 years as well.
Awesome. Thank you. For the second question, Wayne, we'll start with you. "There's been a lot of news coverage and now new legislation on police reform. As member of the town council, what is your view on the future of policing and how would you apply the view to police services in Hampstead?"
Well, first I'll admit that I have not read the law that was just passed. But for Hampstead, our police department is always, is already wearing body cameras. I have faith that Chief David Snyder will work through any new requirements and that our award-winning police department will be up to the challenge of adopting those requirements. I will continue to see that the police department has the funding they need to get the job done.
Thank you. Zach, should I repeat the question?
No. HR 1319. I'm not a fan of rushed legislation. I feel like they're taking a hatchet that where they need a scalpel. And with my friends and some of whom I consider very close brothers, I'm worried for them of how they're going to be able to do their job, and I think we're all still trying to figure that out amongst law enforcement, elected officials, and, you know, this is fresh. And Maryland, I believe, was the first state to enact anything like this. And then we had states follow suit, and this is a repeal, so everybody, just in case everybody doesn't know, to the officer bill rights. So the biggest thing is retention, officer retention. I worry about that consistently. We are competing with counties around us that are able to pay more. Let's be honest, it's not Carroll County, you know, think I love Carroll County and our, you know, and in our environment, and it's a lot dangerous in other areas, but they get a lot higher pay. We're competing with them. They gotta feed their families. They gotta come home to their families at night. You know, I just found myself shaking people's hands and apologizing for this. So I, retention's the big one that we're gonna have to worry about, but there's gonna be so much other unintended consequences from this that we're gonna have to just, as we, as we see, adapt, change, and make sure we keep our people safe.
All right. Ben, can I repeat the question for you?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
By the way, my first base was Omaha, Nebraska, so I'm very familiar with, once I got out of Omaha, I thought I was lost. Anyway, you're right. One-light towns are small.
Yes.
"There's been a lot of news coverage and now new legislation on police reform. As a member of the town council, what is your view on the future of policing and how would you apply that view to the police services in Hampstead?"
Okay. So when I listened to just a brief overview of what the police, police reform that was announced, I was just thinking, and I can't, I can't remember all the details, because I was thinking, it's going to be so hard, as Zach said, to, to retain people or to recruit people to be policemen. I know, growing up, and I had no reason to be afraid, but I was afraid of a policeman if they drove by. And I think as policemen and as a community, as a town, we need to communicate and get them in the face of the children, show them that they're, they're nice. I mean, one of my favorite people, they weren't policemen, but the trash man, when he would drive by and pick up our trash, growing up in Nebraska, he would give us suckers. So I loved seeing him, and not that policemen need to give away candy, but to make children like them. I think just the idea of being out in the face in, in situations where it's more open and, and a kind atmosphere will help gain the public's trust. And I think that's one of the major issues right now, is just having the public's trust. In the future, I know we've, we've done well. We've, part of the finances that we, we had funded was to get a new police car. We put body cams on all our policemen. We've done a lot of training. They report how much training they have every, every town council meeting. So I think we're going in the right direction. I think continued training, continual training is what keeps people on their toes and keeps them, keeps them learning. That's what I would continue to promote as a town councilman.
Awesome. Thank you. Diane?
Hi. Yeah, I also think that it's important to make sure that the public is, is truly aware of how much training the police officer is complete during their, their careers. I think there's probably a misperception out there that the police get their training, their initial training, and that's it. But I know here in Hampstead, every month, Chief Snyder reports to the town council, and he includes a detailed account of all the training that our officers complete. And their training is comprehensive and holistic. It includes everything from the latest developments in cyber crimes and controlled dangerous substances to effective techniques during encounters with individuals who have cognitive or behavioral challenges. And they deal with training in hostage and barricade situations. So, you know, their training is very, very broad. And as they strive to keep Hampstead one of the safest towns in Maryland, our officers demonstrate how much they care about the people in our community. I don't really see police reform as causing any drastic changes to how our police department does their business, because they already are being as proactive as they possibly can. So just keep up the good work, and thank you, Chief and staff.
Awesome. Thank you. Question number three. Zach, we'll start with you.
Yes, sir.
"From my view, the town government has presented a unified stance on legislation and the direction of the town and appears to respect each other's opinions, from elected and appointed positions to the staff." A slightly different two-part question for each of you. "Zach, when you ran for mayor two years ago, you shared a somewhat negative opinion of the town government. What is your view on how the town government operates? And if elected, how would you earn the trust and respect of those currently serving the town and its residents? Secondly, what experiences in your life have qualified you to be a leader?"
Answer the first part first. Yeah, so two years ago, I did run against Mayor Nevin. I believe contested elections are good. And to be quite frank and honest with you, as I was going over everything for this forum tonight, I've been super impressed with what the town council and mayor has done in regards to the budget, to the survey for the comprehensive planning. This is all stuff that I wanted to see when I was running, and they're getting it done. So I have, you know, I'm agreeing with what they're doing, so I really don't have much of a change of direction, as I do, as I want to complement what they already do. I mean, you know, the second part, this is what I was asked this last forum, too. And if, if you're in Carroll County, and I do a lot for, for the community. I've been a leader for, you know, or considered a leader. I still don't like, you know, it's still a little weird for me to, to say that, but for close to 11 years, if not longer, I was in, you know, a band, and we toured everywhere, and, you know, I was doing that. Started my own business, Chamber of Commerce, very involved in that, a lot of volunteering. So what qualifies, qualifies me to be a leader? I mean, it's just, it's, I almost look at that question like people aren't doing their research at all, because I really have been active and in leadership positions for a long time. I sit as the Vice Chair on the Mid-Maryland Workforce Commission. I constantly ask for, you know, joint board directors, which I would love to, but I can't do that because of all my time. You know, I, that's, you can't, you know how much it is if you sit on a board for nonprofits. So I have quite a bit of leadership experience. Two minutes doesn't give me enough time to really go over all the things that I have done. And I'm, I'm very happy with what I've done. I know I have a lot to learn, and I hope to do that alongside the council and the mayor. I think I need that, so.
Thank you. Ben, I'll repeat it, because it is lengthy and yours is a little bit different.
Okay.
"From my view, the town government has presented a unified stance on legislation and the direction of the town and appears to respect each other's opinions, from the elected and appointed positions to the staff." Slightly different two-part question. For Ben, "As someone who is new to Hampstead, local government, what is your view on the statement and how would you earn the trust and respect of those currently serving in the town and its residents? Secondly, what experiences in your life have qualified you to be a leader?"
Okay. So what is my view on the town? Is that what the first question?
That's correct. "As someone who is new to Hampstead, local government, what is your view on, on the statement that I previously read?"
Okay. Okay. So when moving here, I've only been here, I moved here in the last, in September of 2019. So it's, it hasn't been too long. My view of the town as a whole, just driving through it and seeing the people, I mean, everybody waves, so that's really nice. I like just everybody's friendly neighbor. I like how clean the town is. I like how, as a, as a town, everybody seems to pick up after themselves. At least that's how I've seen it. I like to, to keep it that way. I can add to my view of how the town can improve, and I know it's, hindsight's 2020, and I know finances was a big deal to, to try and do it, but I would have liked to have seen the power lines on Main Street underground. I know that was a couple million dollars to do that, though, and, I mean, Hampstead as a town, we would have had to pay for it. So it was, it's hard, but everybody I talked to, they, they say, "The town looks great. The sidewalks look great on Main Street. The lights are amazing. The upgrade of the sewer and water on Main Street was, was essential." But they all ask, "Why, why didn't they put the, the power lines underground?" That's their question. And it was a financial decision in the end. I know, looking forward, I don't, being in construction and the impact of the businesses, when, when would we have a chance to do that again, would be my question. And if it would have, to me, it might have been worth the effort to go and, and go ahead and do it if we could have, could have found a creative way to do, find funding. And then to be a leader, I only have five seconds left. I have served, I, I serve in the military as, as an officer. I served in leadership positions in my, in my job as a project manager and as a volunteer in, as a missionary for my church. I was in quite a few leadership positions. So I have, I have 12 years' experience as being a leader.
Great. Thank you. Diane?
Yes.
Shall I repeat the beginning of it? I think you've heard it by now, but I'm more than happy to.
Yes, please. Uh, yes, please.
From my view, the town government has presented a unified stance on legislation and the direction of the town and appears to respect each other's opinions. From the elected and the appointed positions to the staff, a slightly two-part question for you. From your positions on Board of Zoning and Appeals and now Planning and Zoning, do you agree with that statement and what is your view for the reasons of this team approach? Secondly, what has been your biggest takeaway from your experience serving the town?
Okay. Well, um, I, yeah, I do think that all of the members of the, um, the board, the, the council and planning and zoning, we all get along. We all respect each other. Um, and I think it's because we, you know, we all wanna participate and we all want to, um, you know, our, our end goal is to make Hampstead better and better. Um, and even if we have, you know, different views, we, we definitely have the respect for each other and the consideration to at least understand each other's point of views. And sometimes we can change each other's minds. Um, I mean, I, I'm, you know, one of the newer members and so I, I listen more than I talk. Um, I absorb a lot of information from them and I certainly, you know, respect their, um, experience, but I also feel that, um, they value my views and concerns and ideas just as much as I value theirs. Um, and I'm sorry, the second, the second part, it was a little bit different than the other ones.
Yeah. The second part, um, is basically, um, what has been your biggest takeaway from your experience serving the town?
Um, my biggest takeaway is, um, that's a good question. Um, I, I just, I really enjoy, um, you know, my interactions with the, with the people and the businesses here. And, um, I've also found that, uh, when we have conversations with, um, meeting attendees afterwards, um, oftentimes those conversations are more relaxed and insightful even than the ones that, that take place during the, uh, during the meetings. And I don't know if people are maybe just camera shy or maybe feel that, um, you know, their concerns or whatever aren't necessarily important enough to be on public record, but they just wanna have a conversation afterwards. And, and I enjoy that. Um, and I really enjoy learning from the public and, and what their views and visions are.
Thank you. Wayne, last but not least, is, is there, how long has the longest run for a council member, Ben? Do you know that?
In Hampstead?
Yeah.
I think I might have it.
I was, I was thinking that would be the case, but that's why I threw that in.
Not mayor, though.
Not mayor. Okay. From my view, the town government has presented a unified stance on legislation and the direction of the town and appears to respect each other's opinions. From the elected and the appointed positions to the staff, the two-part question for you. Being involved in town government for over 25 years, I believe you said 28 years, I assume you agree with that statement. What is your view for the reasons of this team approach and your role in helping foster it? That's the first question. Secondly, what has been your biggest takeaway from the experience serving the town?
Okay. So having been on the council for 28 years, um, not everything that came before the council was something that I was in favor of. Um, but the council, you know, allowed me to speak my piece. Um, and if it looked like they were gonna go forward with whatever they had planned, I made sure that it was legally correct. Uh, you know, you wanna make sure that the legislation you're passing doesn't have any holes in it. And that it kinda drove a couple council people crazy because I would spend, you know, 20 minutes making sure that the legislation they're about to pass was legally correct and then I wouldn't vote for it. So, and I've always told them that I may not agree with what you're passing, but I'm gonna make sure that it's right. And so, you know, that's the way it's been. And it's, it's been acceptable. There's been a few people that, you know, at the end of the day, you take a vote, whichever way it goes, that's it. That's the way it is. There's been a few people that didn't go along with that, but they're not here anymore. So I'm not worried about it. But all in all, I think that the town council works very well with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we have no real say over the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, they're a whole different animal. They can do whatever they want when it comes to approving something. Um, the rule, the, the, the role of the council is to make sure that they have the laws, the code to follow to make sure that they do what you want them to do. Um, my biggest takeaway is I've really enjoyed this over the last 28 years. It's been eye-opening. I've learned an awful lot about zoning, planning, um, legislating, and trying to work with people to make sure that they understand why we do the things we do. So it's been very rewarding for me. Otherwise, I wouldn't be going for another four years.
Fantastic. Thank you. So now it goes down to one minute. Get your fast-talking lips ready. Ben?
Yes, sir.
We'll start with you, sir. What are your ideas on promoting Main Street Hampstead? Now, remember, I have a business on Main Street, so it's important.
Yes. Um, I like the idea. I know somebody in the town council had mentioned earlier, I think it was Dave Unglesby, about putting benches on the sidewalk to help people, um, keep walking and sitting and, and promoting going to downtown, I mean, to the main street. And, uh, I also, being of the younger generation and trying, more families moving in with all the developments, that's, uh, a couple hundred houses, houses going in, promoting on social media accounts, um, the businesses that are here. I think that would be great. That's, people, when they look at where to go and what to eat or what to do, where to buy jewelry, I, I mean, everybody's looks, Googles it first or goes to Facebook and gets, looks for recommendations. Um, so that's what I would do. I, I, I think we could get a social media, um, representative to try and promote the things in the town. I think that would help us a lot, um, with, with the way, uh, technology's been advancing.
Awesome. Thank you. Diane, back to you.
Okay. Um, Main Street Hampstead is open for business. Uh, the new sidewalks and crosswalks are much more pedestrian friendly. Um, the new lighting makes Main Street safer and improves the visibility of both pedestrians and traffic. And these enhancements are integral to attracting more businesses to complement the businesses that we already have. Um, as for the town of Hampstead itself, uh, overall, it is one of the safest towns in Maryland and a great place to raise families. There are plenty of youth sports and recreation programs, as well as several parks and playgrounds. We have award-winning schools and attractive, well-maintained neighborhoods. And Hampstead is really what small-town America's all about.
Wayne?
A largely citizen-based group has formed the Hampstead Revitalization and Beautification Committee, which is looking for ways to beautify our Main Street. Um, they have been looking for ways to promote Hampstead's Main Street and have been reaching out to the Main Street Association and to the town for support. Uh, we should continue to look for ways to bring people to our downtown, like the Main Street, like the Hampstead train station's, uh, Music in the Park series. Hampstead is a great place to live and a good place to do business. We need to tell the world.
Thank you. Zach, shall I repeat the question?
Please.
What are your ideas on promoting Main Street in Hampstead?
Only get a minute for this? Uh, branding, branding, branding. Uh, it's all about branding. Uh, I am very present on social media. As many people know, I have quite a, a following, if you wanna say, but that is a very precise way to do that. Uh, you have to target people. There's, there's all this criteria that, you know, you have to do to build up that following and make sure you're getting seen. So definitely, uh, social media presence. Like I said, branding. Who are we? What do we want to say to the rest of the world? Come here, bring your business here. You gotta go out and get those businesses. Working with people like the Chamber of Commerce, which like, again, county-based. So instead of, you know, a small select that are already here, let's go out, talk to the county, find colleagues in the county, then say, hey, look, you wanna start a franchise up here? We want it to be destination stuff. That's, you know, keep it small, have people come here, spend their money, you know? Yeah, that's my, that's my thought. Oh, I had three seconds left.
Awesome. Right on time. All right. I think we're full circle now. So Diane, we're back to you. What is your opinion of the town's financial position and tax rate? What funding priorities do you think are important? And are there any areas that should be off limits for spending cuts should they become necessary? I'm happy to repeat that once you answer the first part if you need.
Okay. Well, um, Hampstead continues to keep its property tax rate one of the lowest in Carroll County while providing top-notch public works and public safety services. Salaries in both departments are competitive with surrounding jurisdictions and they are well-provided with the equipment to do their jobs effectively and efficiently. Replacement of the water mains has resulted in much less water wasted, which helps keep the costs low. And this process is ongoing. Um, and as mentioned earlier, we're receiving, uh, some state funding for the War Memorial Park, which will bring more, um, events to town. And we're also receiving some money from the state for the fire department. And the second part of that question, please.
What funding priorities do you think are important? And are there any areas that should be off limits for spending cuts should they become necessary?
Um, in terms of funding, um... I'm drawing a blank here, but in terms of, uh, not cutting spending, I don't think we should cut any spending, uh, on the, uh, on our, on our public safety. Um, our police definitely need to, uh, continue to be paid competitive salaries and, um, be provided with all the technology and everything that they need to do their jobs and to keep them safe.
Great. Thank you. Wayne, to you. What is your opinion of the town's financial position and the tax rate, number one? Number two, what funding priorities do you think are important? And are there any areas that should be off limits for spending cuts should they become necessary?
Okay. The town's financial position is extremely good. Uh, we have good credit and have been able to bond some of our larger projects at extremely low interest rates. Uh, examples are our water infrastructure and also our, our paving bonds. Uh, we're getting three to four million dollars in COVID relief funding. It can be used to offset COVID-19 impacts as well as pay for infrastructure projects. As far as cutting, um, we've done a fantastic job with the guidance of Mayor Nevin on our budgets to make sure that we cover everything we have to cover and to make sure that we don't have to cut anything, even when we were at extremely low tax income levels, even when we lost our HUD money for, uh, paving roads. So, um, as far as what I would never cut would be the police department funding, public works funding, and town of Hampstead staff funding.
Awesome.
That's what makes town a great.
Thank you. Zach, same question.
Again, I have to agree with Diane and Wayne. Um, I looked over the budget and it, this is from, you know, uh, 2019 to 2020. Uh, COVID, obviously, I, you know, I don't have those numbers in front of me so that, you know, we, I haven't gone there. But the grants, uh, we're getting good money from, for grant writing, which is amazing. Um, the tax rate is good. Uh, Mayor Nevin and the council did a great job on the budget. Um, as far as where I think priorities should be, infrastructure, as Wayne said, and I echo both sentiments when I say off limits. Um, uh, Mayor Nevin said last election that, that nothing is off table. And I, I kind of understand where he's coming from with that. If you don't have the money, you don't have it. But I would prefer last, uh, public safety and police, I mean, public works, uh, you know, our residents of our town, public safety. Uh, you know, I don't think we can cut that.
Awesome. Thank you. Ben?
Yes, sir.
You ready again?
I'm ready.
What is your opinion of the town's financial position and the tax rate? What funding priorities do you think are important? And are there any areas that should be off limits for spending cuts should that become necessary?
Okay. So the budget was fairly well, um, leveled. I would say it was just like, uh, 3% over budget was all. Um, so not, it's not too bad. I, I think part of it was we, we bought new, um, equipment and leased new equipment for our public works jobs. And, um, so it was, it was needed, um, for us to continue our work as a city to, to get things done. Um, but we're still fiscally responsible in my, in my opinion. Um, the tax rate was, has been the same for six years. Before that, it was the same for 10 and 11 years. So I, I think as a town, we are doing well at, uh, even though we're growing and trying to level a budget as we grow, um, we're, we're doing well at keeping the tax rate low instead of having to increase it. Um, I think as a funding priority, with us getting turned over the Main Street road, uh, we'll have to take care of the snow removal of that road now and eventually repave it. So we probably will want to save money to, to do that.
Great. Thank you. Your minute's up. All right. So we go from one minute to 15 seconds. It gets better. It gets better. Wayne, the 15-second question. We'll start with you. What is your biggest accomplishment in life?
Biggest accomplishment in life? Uh, raising five children.
Wow. Fantastic. Zach?
I'm in the process of raising fi, uh, five children. So I'll, I'll get there and we'll see how we go at the end of the day. Um, in 20, in 2020, when COVID started, I did the mask-making project. We had over 15,000 mask equivalents from napkin to manufacturing to distribution within a month. Uh, I knew nothing about any of that and I learned very quickly. And the local people's faces when you're giving them the stuff. Wow.
Thank you. Ben?
Uh, I like to think people would say this about me. And in my opinion, my greatest accomplishment is, uh, just being a good person and a good father and a good husband.
Perfect. Thank you. Diane?
Balancing single parenthood with work.
All right. Very good. So the second 15-second question. Zach, we get to start with you. Your main goal in life that you have yet to fulfill?
My passion's helping people. Um, I help people honestly because it makes me feel good. So it's like a selfish reason, really. Um, but, uh, I think I still have more of that to do. Uh, I believe that I have a lot of untapped potential that I s, you know, still need mentors to help guide me and, and, um, so I, I have a long ways to go and I know that I'm still relatively young.
My main goal in life that I've yet to fulfill, um... I've always just, uh, dreamed of, it's kinda funny to say, just being at an age where you can say, I've made it. Uh, I don't know what that age is, but just looking back and said, I, I lived a good life. That's, that, that's my main goal.
Fantastic. Diane?
I would like to see more of the world. I haven't had a chance to do that yet.
Awesome.
Hike the Appalachian Trail from Georgia to Maine.
Wow. How many miles is that?
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
I think it's 2,560.
Wow. That's a lot. I had a sore mouth the other day and I thought I was dead by the end of it. So, wow. All right. Uh, might I remind the audience, please refrain from talking during this. We can hear you. It's very specific. So if you'd please refrain from talking, we appreciate it. Uh, Ben, we'll start with you. Your biggest strength?
Biggest strength, um, I would say try and, uh, being, creating synergy in a team, collaboration, being there to, to bring people together.
Awesome. Diane?
I'm a great listener and collaborator.
Awesome. We're, we're, we're getting it down quicker than 15 seconds.
Endeavoring to persevere.
Wow. Some great answers. Zach?
Uh, continuing in the face of adversity. When you fall down, get back up. Um, that is my biggest strength. Um, I fell so many times. So.
Diane, I think we're back to you. What is your favorite thing about Hampstead? Could be Huffman's ice cream. It could be, tell us what your favorite thing is.
Um, I think it's just that it's a close-knit community where, uh, neighbors help neighbors.
Awesome.
That's a tough question.
Too many, huh?
Too many. I think my favorite thing about Hampstead is the way the community comes together. The community came together to help us, you know, renovate the train station and, uh, and, and as well as the town. And that was, that, that made me feel really good. After all, it is the symbol of the town.
I like all the kids running around. I like seeing all the families together, uh, different events while I'm driving, you know, to and from Robert's Field. Uh, the, the community is close. The people are super nice. It's, it's a great place. I mean, if you follow Facebook feeds, you're, you see all the time people are nonstop doing charitable things for other people, looking out for each other. And that is by far my favorite thing.
Awesome. So Ben, from really small-town America to small-town America, tell us your favorite thing about Hampstead.
I like that, uh, there are parks here and trails to walk and, uh, places to go with your family. I think growing up and not having anything to do, even though Hampstead is small, there's a lot to do and the community helps put on events as well to, to support that.
Fantastic. Wayne, I, I don't think this is gonna be hard for you. So complete the sentence and this'll start with you. Hampstead is?
A great place to live and a good place to do business.
Thank you. Zach? Hampstead is?
Home.
Home. I like that. Ben, you can't steal his. Hampstead is.
I know. It's my home as well. Um, Hampstead... Hampstead is the best place to live, I would say. Best place to raise a family.
Awesome. And I'm sorry you get to answer this last, Diane, but...
Small-town America at its finest.
Ah, I like that, awesome.
The winner.
Zach, complete the sentence. Main Street is?
Main Street is the heart of downtown communities everywhere.
I like that. Ben?
Main Street is growing and will continue to grow. It'll be a focus of our town.
Awesome, I like that, too. Diane?
Main Street is destined to become a destination.
Thank you. Wayne, I know you've got more in there, so, Main Street is?
I think it is fantastic.
Can't complain about that, all right. So, we're moving on. Ben, I think we're around to you now. Coming from Nebraska where corn is corn and the Huskers are the Huskers. The farmer's market is?
Amazing, I, I love the farmer's market. I think it is promoting local businesses and farmers at its best.
Awesome. Diane, to you. The farmer's market is?
It's a great place to support our local farmers and other merchants and everyone comes together.
Wayne?
Having been on the advisory committee for the last 12 years, it's a labor of love. You got to love it, it's a lot of labor.
There you go. Zach, last but not least?
Local farm to food at the table, amazing. Reminds me of my great-grandmother Stan, who used to sit on 32. We used to always sell vegetables and, you know, that, that feel, that's what it gives me.
Fantastic. So, here's an interesting question. Diane, we'll start with you, complete the sentence. A town council member is?
A great listener and a great representative for the people of Hampstead.
Fantastic. Wayne, I think you know this answer. A town council member is?
Someone who wants to work for the betterment of the town.
Awesome. Zach?
A voice for the people.
Awesome. Ben?
I'd echo that it, the town council member is a person that listens, but not only listens, just, just to listen, but helps, tries to help, like, puts, puts in action what they hear.
There is, and fantastic, by the way, that, that went really well. We're, we're winding down on time, but there's a couple other questions that I, I think we should, we should hit quickly just because it's been brought up in some of the answers. Wayne, I'll start with you. What is your position on residential growth? Please try to keep it to a minute or less, if you could time us, that'd be great.
I can keep it to a minute or less. As long as we have the infrastructure to support the growth, I think we should continue to grow.
Zach?
I don't, I don't like seeing rapid residential developing at all. I think that takes away entirely from the small-town feel of Hampstead. So, that's my position when it comes to that. I just don't like all the townhouse communities coming in all at the same time. I feel like that's more of Thelings Mills and, and, you know, that kind of stuff and it's not Hampstead.
Ben?
Working for a developer, I, I appreciate growth. I think, as Wayne said, if there's the infrastructure to do it, especially the water, I know that's a big concern with wells, making sure there's water to support it, the traffic that will come, being able to support that as well. I mean, in our comprehensive plan, a word that stuck out to me was, our city, our town limits are convoluted, so trying to convince people to be annexed into the town would be a great way to try and build growth of the town as well. I know our tax rate is a little bit, a couple cents more than the county, so it might be hard, but it would be worth it. Everybody, the Hampstead community is not just in the town limits, it's all the fringe communities as well and they benefit from, from the town and everything that happens. So, I, I think if we can't sustain it, I, I mean, even getting the public works to those houses annexed in would be a, a task in itself, but that's, I, I support public residential growth.
Great. Diane?
Some residential growth is needed. Residential growth has been stagnant, had been stagnant for about 10 years. And no development is going to be approved without adequate facilities, emergency services, water, you know, traffic, you know, being within the parameters that, that we could support that. As, you know, as, as the community ages, I mean, it's necessary to be able to have adequate housing for, for younger families, for new couples, as well as for people who are, who have a bigger home and are looking to downsize. So, it's important to have an inventory of a variety of homes for people to, to live in. So, in order to, to keep our, our, our tax rates competitive, there, there is some growth needed, but not a lot.
We will now give you candidates the opportunity for your closing statement. Thank you all for your answers tonight. It has been very awesome. I think it was very eye-opening for a lot of people and I appreciate that. Diane, since you opened, Ben, we're going to start with you for the close.
Okay. This is my, I think everybody can tell, probably, maybe you can tell, it's my first time running for a town-elected position. And I was doing it to, as a volunteer, to give service to my community. Reading the town charter, it's a paid position, I didn't even know that. So, that, it's not why I was doing it, because, I mean, I'm sure it's not a lot of money, but I just wanted to volunteer for a, a way to help serve my community, give back, participate, and lend my experience as a, as a civil engineer and a developer. Most of what the town council does is deals with plan, planning and zoning and public works and I feel like I'd be able to help the town council with my perspective, since I've been in that arena for quite some time. And just hit the ground running and, and help out the town. Thank you.
Perfect. Zach?
So, I liked Ben's closing statement. Honestly, when this, when I decided to run this time, because it was up in the air for me, there was like a vacant spot, there was, I only knew two, two people running and there were three seats and I didn't want to see a write-in. And I said, last election, if you have the ability, you have the responsibility. So, I had to be a man of my word and, and be here tonight to step up and volunteer and, or, I consider volunteering as well. You know, I bring a lot of good stuff to the table. I think I would be a great asset to the town and to the council as well. I believe that it's a good, I'd be a good person to bring in, you know, and learn the ropes, get everything together, because I am young and business continuity, or government, continuity of government is so important and you can see it's harder and harder to get people to run for these positions.
Thank you, Wayne?
I'm Wayne H. Thomas, running for reelection to the Hampstead Town Council. If you like the service I've given for the last 28 years, please out, come out and vote for me on May 11th. If you'd like an absentee ballot, please contact the Hampstead Town Office for details. Thank you, be safe.
Thank you. Diane?
I would like to thank everyone in attendance and everyone watching the livestream for taking an active interest in this year's election. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for offering to contribute your time and talents for the benefit of our town. I've been a small-town resident my entire life and I wouldn't have it any other way. I'm not a politician, but simply a resident who cares about my fellow residents, the businesses, and the safety of our town. Having served as an advocate and a succession of appointed roles in Hampstead's government, I would welcome the opportunity to continue serving the town in a new role. I'm hopeful that I've earned your vote through my professional background, my record of service, and the information that I provided for you tonight, and I look forward to seeing you all on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me start by saying thank you to our mayor for asking me to moderate this. I'd also like to thank my lovely timekeeper, you've done an excellent job, appreciate it. So, that concludes our forum for this evening. We would like to thank all the candidates for joining us this evening. A special thanks to the Community Media Center for providing this important programming to our residents. This forum has been recorded and will be available on-demand viewing on the CMC website at carolmedia dot, carolmediacenter.org. It will also be rebroadcast on cable, channel HD 1086 and channel 19 until Election Day. The first rebroadcast will be May 1st and 2nd at 7:00 PM and May 3rd at 6:00 PM. Start the popcorn. The Hampstead election will be held Tuesday, May 11th at the Town Hall located 1034 South Carroll Street. Polls will open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Before we go, I'd like to encourage everyone to learn about the candidates running in the 2021 municipal elections by visiting the CMC's online voter's guide at carolmediacenter.org. Thank you all for joining us. Good night and God bless America.
Thank you.
Thank you.